All right, welcome everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 10th. This is a special meeting and the agenda for tonight is discussion on Council Cannabis Subcommittee Recommendations and Requests for Direction on Cannabis Ordinance to Regulate Business and Personal Use. And for the record, we do have a quorum. Councilmember Mackiewetzky will be coming shortly, but he will be here. But we do have a quorum and we'll call the meeting to order. And with that, I've got one speaker slip. We'll go right into public comment and then we'll open it up to our Deputy Assistant City Attorney, Chris Newmeyer. He'll lead us through this discussion. And I've only got one speaker slip for this and that's Adam Pinteritz. If you want to come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. My name is Adam Pinteritz. Thank you for your time this evening and your ongoing work to move forward with safe and reasonable cannabis regulation ordinance. I appreciate that the draft ordinance before us tonight, or the guidelines, have good elements, such as zoning and more thorough public smoking restrictions. I would like to present a few suggestions to streamline regulations and increase long-term city revenue. Most urgently, I recommend accepting permit applications as soon as possible. The state will be accepting pre-applications for licensing to the best qualified businesses starting in December. This initial application period and the most professional and safe businesses like Ethnobotanica applying during this period require some form of local authorization before beginning the lengthy and stringent state licensing process. As a compromise suggestion, if that's too much, provisional authorization could be granted and made contingent upon being awarded a state license. Separately, I urge the Honorable Mayor and City Council members to reconsider permitting adult-use dispensaries. The recent fire at Fur Avenue demonstrates the safety need for a safe and responsible adult-use retailer. Amateur cultivation presents a public safety risk. Professionally-run adult-use dispensaries will greatly reduce the incentive for amateur cultivation by providing a safe way to obtain higher-quality, lab-tested cannabis products at competitive prices. More competitive prices will also benefit medical patients by lowering their treatment costs. Furthermore, adult-use dispensaries will contribute substantially more revenues to the city than medical-only. At the very least, please commit to reconsidering adult use by including in this ordinance a fixed six-month trial period for medical dispensaries to prove their safe and responsible operation. Lastly, please revisit the ordinance language regulating packaging. The state is already crafting stringent regulations for packaging and conflict between state and local regulations will only cause headaches for everybody involved. I suggest instead specifying that all locally permitted cannabis businesses must strictly adhere to state regulations, thereby mitigating the city's administrative and enforcement burdens. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Adam. I don't have any more speaker slips, but public comment? Is there anybody else for public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to our presentation. And Mr. Newmeyer, if you want to start out with a presentation and then we can have questions and discussion by council. And if there's, you know, different flow and questions as you go through the presentation, council members can jump in and ask questions.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here with the final recommendations from the Council Cannabis Subcommittee after intensive discussion with a lot of city staff and with the public and also the council has been involved at public sessions. We do have a final recommendation here for an ordinance. And I'm just going to briefly go through some of the background. It'll just be a few minutes and then jump to, in the staff report, the actual details of the ordinance that's being recommended. And then we'd like to seek either council consensus on the recommendation or to have some further direction on the recommendation. So, the staff report mentions that, first of all, the recommendation that we're seeking is either approve the ordinance that's provided here outlined or to have some modifications to it with the intent of bringing back an ordinance at the October 24th meeting for first reading. And the urgency, of course, is that we'd like to have an ordinance effective by the end of the year, which we could do by having a first reading on October 24th. Fiscal impact, as we've discussed before, there are two main issues: whether or not we're going to charge fees for the different permits that may be issued, and we can recoup all costs, and the Subcommittee is recommending we do that, with the exception of for personal cannabis cultivation, just charging a nominal fee. And then second, the issue of local taxes. And the Cannabis Council Subcommittee is recommending that with further information provided by staff, the City Council consider sending a tax ballot measure to the voters for cannabis next fall. As a matter of brief background, as we all know, state law has changed rapidly in the last few years. And right now, state law says that on the personal level, individuals can use cannabis, individuals can possess up to an ounce of cannabis, and individuals can grow six plants at their private residence. There is some local control over these personal use items, and we'll discuss those on the recommendation. And then the other big issue is, on the commercial side, we have a bunch of different businesses that the state will be licensing next year. Cities have complete local control over these businesses. They can prohibit, allow, or allow some and prohibit others. They can impose tighter regulations than the state has. However, cities need to do an ordinance to actually exercise this local control, or we default to the state. With that in mind, I'd like to just turn now to the different recommendations from the Subcommittee in the staff report. And under discussion item, we start off with personal cultivation. And the Subcommittee has largely provided recommendations that are consistent with the council direction at the prior meeting when this was all discussed. What I thought I would do is just go through the different recommendations and after going through them, if the council would like to have an ordinance with those in it, then if we have concurrence, we can move on to the next topic, or we can have discussion and questions on each of them. So, for personal cultivation, the direction from the Subcommittee, which is largely consistent with prior council direction, is to allow, of course, the six plants that state law says you must allow at a private residence. Two of the six can be grown outdoors. However, if they're grown outdoors, they need to be at least 10 feet from the property line. And also, it cannot be seen from public spaces, and you adhere to general regulations. And you comply with all state and local law. This is under personal cultivation A limitations. And the limits would apply equally to both adult-use or recreational marijuana, as well as medical marijuana. I wanted to point out that the current code right now provides that one can cultivate medical marijuana as needed. And so, to streamline the code, the committee is recommending that we limit personal medical marijuana cultivation to six plants, to be consistent with the six plants that you can grow for any use. As for the reasonable regulations, the basic idea would be that the cultivation needs to be in a secured space, reasonably inaccessible to minors. Odor control, and the way the ordinance would be set up is that basically your neighbors won't be able to smell the cannabis being grown. If you're growing it outdoors, you need to make sure the neighbors can't smell it. If you're growing it indoors, same thing. And if there's a problem with growing it outdoors, causing odor problems, then the city may require you to grow it indoors. So, it would basically be a good neighbor policy. Also, we would have limits on electrical draw. Make sure that if there's any artificial lighting, the neighbors aren't bothered by it. You must make sure that where you're growing it actually is a private residence, so there'd be a fully functioning and usable kitchen, bathroom, bedroom areas. And also, cultivation shall not displace required parking in a garage. The city cannot prohibit indoor cultivation in an accessory structure to a private residence. However, if we have required parking that must be available in a garage, we can say you can't displace that. And I know this issue was brought up at a prior meeting on garages. And then the permit. There's been a lot of discussion on what type of permit, if any, to require. The Council Cannabis Subcommittee has recommended that there be basically a simple permit process where an individual will basically self-certify, self-inspect, and turn into form to the city saying that they intend to grow cannabis at their property. There'll be a nominal fee charged. We don't want to make it prohibitive. And there will not be the requirement for annual renewals. Rather, the city will just have a record of who intends to grow with the purpose of primarily making sure first responders know where there might be indoor cannabis cultivation occurring. And you'd require a property owner consent. It's non-transferable. And the intent is basically to have a very light permitting requirement. So, that is the recommendation for personal cultivation. And what staff is seeking now is either council agreement with the recommendation or modifications to the recommendation.
Okay. Well, that would probably be a good time to have any questions or discussions on this item. And I know Redd and Marlese are Subcommittee members. If you want to open up on the comments thus far, and then maybe John and I will get into some questions as well.
Okay. I'll start out with a question for Chris, and thank you very much, Chris, and the entire staff for all of the work they've put in on getting us this far. What exactly would be the penalty if, for example, we find that somebody is growing more than six plants? And then also, if they are growing and they don't get a permit? So, would there be a fine attached to that?
Yes. The ordinance that is contemplated would be a violation section where it could be an infraction or misdemeanor at the discretion of the city prosecutor. Misdemeanors are punishable by a fine up to $1,000. And infractions under the current code are punishable on first offense at $100, and then it starts to go up to $500 for multiple offenses. And there also would be the ability for nuisance abatement. So, if somebody is growing excessive amounts of plants in violation of the local code, causing a public nuisance, then again, the city prosecutor, city attorney could bring a civil nuisance abatement action against the grow.
Okay. Thank you. That was the only question I had. I do have discussion, but I'll wait and see if others have questions before discussion.
Redd?
Yeah, thank you, Chris. I wanted to be sure that the ordinance provides that we have access for firefighting equipment and emergency evacuation capability. Is that understood under the general regulations, or do we need to specify that?
The ordinance as contemplated does not require that there be any structural changes to where the marijuana will be grown. We could consider putting that in to the ordinance. It might be considered unusual to require repurposing of a structure, if that's what you're referring to.
No, I'm just, just reasonable access in the event that a fire occurs.
No, there aren't any provisions for that right now in the ordinance.
Well, let me ask Chief Knuckles, or Scott, is that just generally part of our code?
Yeah, when the building is constructed or modified, it does go through the Fire Marshal's Office for access issues and other issues pertaining to the California Fire Code. So, I don't think we would need to add any additional ordinance to this because it's already been done already.
Okay. Very good. Thanks. All right, John?
Yes, thank you Subcommittee, and thank you, Chris, for your work on this. Appreciate that very much. Couple of questions for you, whoever would like to answer. What's the rationale for the 10-foot property line issue? I'm just curious as to what, why?
The idea was to have some sort of barrier between where the cannabis is being cultivated in the neighboring property with the intent that it's not up against a fence or right at the property line. It could be five feet, it could be 15 feet. The committee thought that 10 feet was, you know, a good space to use. Scott might have some more ideas on why we picked 10 feet as well.
It was really to minimally address nuisance odor.
Got it. Okay, great. Would, I know what I was going to ask you. Define plant. A plant. I mean, is it a bush? Is it, what's a plant?
The way the code's set up is that the plant would be any of the cannabis sativa species, which can be anywhere from a few inches high to, you know, 10 feet high. However, the general limitation is you can't see the plants from a public place. So, that means you can't see someone growing it from a sidewalk, from the street, from in front of the house. So, if somebody has a huge parcel and they're growing a large plant, but no one can see it from a public place, it'd be allowed. If somebody has a small backyard and the plants they can grow are only two, three feet high without being seen from a public place, that's their limitation. And of course, people can always take it indoors.
So, yeah, so indoors, basically, it could be, if you had a 10-foot ceiling or 12-foot ceiling, it could be 12 feet high, thusly the need for the electrical issue and the concern about the draw on that and the limitations.
Yes.
I foresee these huge bushes inside of rooms. And so, okay, so, and then outdoors, I apologize, was there, did you say there should be or is a height limitation requirement? It just can't be seen visibly? Is that how we're limiting height?
Yes. Height is only limited by you can't see it from a public place.
Okay. So, if somebody had a shielded area in their backyard, like people grow outdoors in shielded areas like Cambria in the hills and ranches and hidden areas, I'm not pointing to Cambria anywhere, but there was a recent bust there. I mean, they grow those things within outdoor areas that are shielded by other plants. And so, that same thing could happen here with huge plants growing with two outdoors. Is that true, is a possibility, or is there any way to limit that?
Yes. And also, within the context of the state preemption on indoor grows includes accessory structures. So, whether or not we prohibit outdoor cultivation, you still have the right to grow six plants in a greenhouse, a shed, some sort of independent structure that is secondary to the primary.
Got it. Okay. And the artificial lighting, shielded so that completely confined to a private residence, is that to protect others from visual impairment from the excess light or something?
Yes. The intent is that the neighbors should not suffer any sort of nuisance or bother by light or odor or seeing it from a public place. So, yes, that's for the neighbors.
Cool. And my last question is this. Could you define for me with minors, which is my biggest concern with the whole indoor or self-growth thing, is the term reasonably inaccessible? I'm thinking about my, not mine, but a 12-year-old, 10-year-old. How do you reasonably make it inaccessible to a young child like that? What's, some thoughts, some thoughts? How to interpret that?
Well, as a matter of background, the word reasonable is used because the new regulations from Prop 64 say that you can't stop indoor cultivation, you can only reasonably regulate it. And there's no other explanation of reasonable in Prop 64, except for they use the word twice. It says you can reasonably regulate through reasonable regulations. And so, we're going to see what the courts have to say about what reasonable is. So, I thought it was best to just stick with the term that is approved by the law now. And I would think that reasonable would include when folks turn in their self-certification, self-inspection plan for their grow, we could require them to have a couple of lines explaining how they plan to keep minors from having access to the plant. And also, keep in mind, during the grow season, for most of the time until harvest, the plant is generally not able to be used for getting high.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Just want to follow up on a couple of questions from Dr. Hitting as well. As far as the 10 feet from the property line, obviously, that's going to limit some folks to where they can't even grow at all in their backyard, just based on that alone. Have we considered that?
That was part of the discussion that we had as part of the Subcommittee.
And then the other thing is, cannot be seen from public spaces. So, I would take that to be that a neighbor looking down at another yard, that could be a public space as well. I just want to be clear, when I look at this language, so, a next-door neighbor saying, hey, it's visible from my yard, is that, would that be true to that statement?
We actually discussed that as well, and we concluded it'd be best to not include private property looking down from, say, a balcony, because then you might strip folks the ability to grow at all. We could certainly put that in, but the intent was public places, sidewalks or streets, not somebody standing on their roof or on a second-story balcony looking down at a yard. But we could put that in.
So, was there any discussion on, I'm just reading through the language and saying allowing up to six plants to be grown outdoors, cannot be seen from public spaces. Was there any discussion on just, hey, let's just, you know, typical fence is six feet, six inches, just let's just say can't be grown above six feet, then you don't have to worry about various interpretations or anything like that? Was there any discussion on that?
No, we didn't have that discussion, but that certainly is a common sense alternative.
Okay. And then the six plants allowed to be cultivated in outdoors. We did have discussions on two, two to be grown outdoors. Allowed two of six to be grown outdoors, that would be outdoors, not necessarily outdoor in a greenhouse, but just completely freestanding in the yard is what it comes down to.
Yes, open sunshine and just kind of like you're growing it next to your tomatoes.
And so, sure, cross-pollination there. And so, I just want to be clear on the odor control. I know we're not there yet, and there's still a lot to learn, but there has been, I know San Luis Obispo went through an odor control ordinance over this exact issue. There, I've had some correspondents over some time where there's just been, from odor from a grow as well. So, you know, it exists and how we were able to regulate that. So, if there's complaints at all over odor, what are the repercussions? And do we, are we setting ourselves up into being a mediator over neighbors and that? And how can we be clear in doing that sort of thing upfront?
That's a really good question, and this is certainly maybe one of the top three, if not the biggest issues that local communities are bedeviled by. So, the way the ordinance is contemplated to be set up is that it's just a strict prohibition on odor. So, if human senses can detect odor from a neighboring property, then you either need to fix the problem or you can't grow it that way. There definitely is always the option of growing indoor with an odor control system. And those can cost hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars. So, the idea was that we wouldn't require those, but if there are complaints, then yes, the city would step in and say, it's now illegal to be growing it this way, fix the problem.
I mean, for the sake of kind of the lifestyle, I mean, there could be the situation where just the odor would prohibit someone in a neighboring yard to enjoy their own yard because of whether it's an allergy or just that type of exposure to the odor itself. And we should be able to correct that without, with some recourse. And I just want to make sure that however we're working with that, we can do that quickly and efficiently. I just, so, those are my concerns, and I want to, I just want to have the discussion to where however it's crafted in here or amongst council discussion, that we can address that.
Could I just add one point here? That was part of the reason why we said up to only two plants outdoors was the odor issue, that if you allowed all six plants to be grown outside, there would be more chance for an odor issue. And we did try to say quite clearly in here that if a neighbor complains about odor, you close it down. I mean, they can't continue growing outdoors unless they fix the problem. So, that was the way we addressed it.
Okay. Looking at the city attorney, I just want to make sure that we're covered in that way.
Yes. In fact, the draft language, which I'm anticipating will be brought to the council on the 24th, is that for odor, "The odor resulting from all cultivation shall not be detectable by human senses from any neighboring property or public right-of-way." And then there's going to be a second provision that says, "As necessary, final determination made by the Community Development Director, to ensure that no odor resulting from marijuana cultivation shall be detectable by human senses from any neighboring property or public right-of-way, all cultivation will either occur indoors and/or a marijuana cultivation site shall install and continuously operate a functioning ventilation and filtration system." So, the idea is that if, yeah, the neighbors are complaining, then there's supposed to be a strict provision that the city can apply through code enforcement to make sure that they stop growing the plants that are causing the offensive odor.
Okay. All right. I think that addresses it. I would just, for discussion, just throughout, just the limitation of six-foot in height, that's just kind of a simple form of a starting point, kind of takes away some improvising in what we might have to deal with as far as screening and things like that. But that's the only thing that comes to mind on that part of it, and that's the only comments I have. And be waiting to hear from others on council whether or not they're supportive of that. Matt, do you want to chime in?
I do have a couple of questions. In terms of the outdoor cultivation in backyards, have we considered, and I guess, I don't know, maybe this is for you, Scott, in terms of, I know we have height limit for fences. In terms of backdoor cultivation, has this been considered in terms of that we definitely necessarily have to have six-foot, eight-foot fences in the backyard?
So, we have the six-and-a-half-foot requirement for fences in the backyard. There raises the question, I mean, we should place a hard limit at the top at six-foot. But our ordinance, as it's listed right now, probably you could put both in there, whether it be visible from the adjacent public way or to a maximum of six feet, I suppose. Because we have many properties in town, and you've probably all seen them, we're not flat. We have a lot of topography in town, and so you can be on the right-of-way and be sitting up, and there can be a fence, you know, that's in the property that sits down below, and you can look right into the backyard, at which point they would be very limited in what they could grow in their backyard. And there's any number of scenarios where you can see most of a backyard or a portion of it or what have you. So, I think the point that Chris raised is that our ordinance, the ordinance, the way it's written right now would address that. You wouldn't be able to see it, so you'd have to have a plant that didn't exceed two feet, three feet, whatever it would be the limit that you could see it from the adjacent right-of-way. But you could put the hard cap on it at six if you wanted as well, and so you could have both, I suppose.
In terms of fencing, do we have a limit on the height of a fence that can be, that is allowed? Is it 18?
Six, it's six-and-a-half feet.
Well, the reason I say that is, I've, in different communities around California and Oregon that I've visited, sometimes people, when they have their grows going, they'll put a very high fence on a grow for that year, and then that really affects the look of the city. So, in terms of code enforcement, is this going to be complaint-driven, or will we have the code enforcement, people going out and inspecting these sort of grows to limit those fences from getting too high?
Well, we have the fence height limitation, and we would enforce that. I don't know that we're going to be going around necessarily and doing that other than on a complaint basis as it stands right now, but we, I mean, certainly, the city could. We sort of started down that road at one point a little while ago and pulled back a bit.
And likewise, in terms of, is it okay to move down to Section B right now?
Sure. Chris, and we've already gone through the limitations and that. Go ahead, Matt, yeah.
Okay. I'm looking at item number four in terms of electricity draw. How will that be monitored?
We're proposing first a education coaching type of self-inspection program. Our fire department's too small to hit every home that's going to have a grow, but our goal is to at least educate our public through the self-inspection program, through any other type of means that we can, through public education. And then we are going to have to do some spot checks to check to see how our education program's working. program's working out there. There's no way we're going to be able to hit every home, but we will be doing some spot checks within the three-year process, as is described in our municipal code on the self inspection program.
Okay. All right. Great. Anything else?
Did you want final comment, just comment on recommendation for this section?
Yeah, actually, based on Matt's conversation, I was just thinking, you know what, I think to eliminate any debate on whether or not, hey, I'm going to raise my fence, you know, another couple feet, and then have interaction with neighbors on that and debating code enforcement there, I think my, after the conversation, I think it'd just be simple just to make a max height limit of six feet for the plant grow, and then you don't have to worry about whether or not somebody's, I've got a higher screen, you know, higher fence height for that. But that would be a direction I would at least want to go at this point, whether or not we want to confirm that.
Let me just pose another option. I think one of the reasons for saying that it shouldn't be visible was what if somebody had some kind of a structure, some sort of an enclosed structure in their backyard, like a screened in porch or something, and they decided to grow it in there, and it wasn't visible, and they could, some of these plants can get higher than six feet. So the key thing is that we don't want it visible. And people can complain if it is, regardless of how tall it is. So that was our logic.
So for discussion purposes, I support the six foot height limitation. I had that as a point as well. I don't support the word B1 reasonably. I think it should be inaccessible to minors, however that is possible. I think reasonable leaves it open, and I want to protect young people from toxicity. And those were my comments on that section.
Any other words of discussion on that? Red?
Yeah, I support John's comment about the reasonable accessibility and just strike reasonable. However, I am satisfied with the term that it's not visible from a public space. I think that that covers the situation.
Okay. So to move on, we just have to get some sort of consensus on whether or not we're comfortable with moving ahead with reasonable public spaces, or we want to enact some sort of height limit. Matt, any comments on that?
Well, so Red, when you say reasonable, are you implying that you would like to take out the six foot height limit?
There's not a six foot height limit currently. Currently, the way it is is...
Cannot be visible.
No, I know that, but Jamie, you had mentioned in terms of perhaps we wanted to put in a numerical height limit. And so, Red, are you saying that you'd rather have reasonable rather than a numeric height limit?
No, I'm saying that I like the way it's written as is. The reasonable part was about being accessible to minors.
Okay, so you're okay with the language as is and not enacting a six foot height limit on the plant, is what I get? Okay. And so is Marla's?
Yep.
Okay, so majority on that. We'll move forward on that. Okay? So, and there is consensus on striking the reasonably on B1. I would agree with that. I think that's a good adjustment on the language. I just want to make sure we're all in agreement to that.
Yes.
Okay, we're good to go on that. Okay, so trying to keep up on how we're doing there. And, okay, you want to go and move on?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. So that's personal cultivation. The next big area was public use and smoking regulations. So as a matter of background, recall that the city cannot prohibit marijuana or cannabis use. However, any smoking or secondhand smoke regulations the city has or adopts would apply equally to tobacco and cannabis. And so that's really one of the only ways to regulate cannabis smoking. And so after reviewing the city's secondhand smoke ordinance, which is a good ordinance, there are a few areas that the subcommittee is recommending be tightened up, so it applies to cannabis smoking as well. So the subcommittee's recommending keep the current smoking prohibition, which in general prohibits smoking in public places. However, there are a few exceptions, and so we were going to take some of those out. One of the biggest ones was that if somebody reasonably, there's that word again, believes that they're smoking in a public place where other people won't come by while they're smoking, then it's okay to be smoking. Well, that just seems like a big loophole, so we take that exception out. We also wanted to expressly prohibit vaping. And perhaps one of the biggest areas was penalties. Right now, the current smoking ordinance only has infractions for violation. And so we had in there that it could also be subject to misdemeanor, which would mean a maximum fine of $1,000 and up to six months in jail. And also have for excessive smoking on private property, have some sort of nuisance abatement procedure. What we were contemplating was that if somebody is regularly smoking large amounts of cannabis in their backyard, and, which is legal to do, but the smoke becomes so excessive that it's constantly blowing into the neighbor's yard, then we could say this has become a public nuisance, and we could crack down on it as a secondhand smoking violation. So adding that as well. So these are the recommendations for tightening up the secondhand smoke ordinance.
Okay, we'll start with questions and discussion, and I'm going to look towards Red to start us off on that.
Yeah, I don't have any questions on it.
Okay. And you want to start discussion on any of these as well?
I guess the only area that I'm a little fuzzy on is be amend current exemptions in order to strengthen prohibition. And we are not enumerating those, so I'm not sure what the final product is going to look like.
Right now, as I've mentioned, the only exemption that I thought should be tightened up is the vague one that says you can smoke in a public place if you think no one's going to walk by you. Otherwise, I think the current exemptions for, say, private property, et cetera, are generally reasonable or generally good to have. So it's just that one exemption.
Okay, then. Okay, Matt?
Yes, one question I have in terms of number two is e expressly prohibit vaping. And Marla's and/or Chris, maybe you guys can explain this. Are we going to also prohibit vaping with tobacco products?
Yes.
Now, in terms of asking why that's done, are we talking about the nuisance of the excessive smoke? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, absolutely. I think a lot of cities are currently changing their smoking regulations to take into account the fact that vaping has become so popular, and it certainly produces smoke, just as tobacco does, so yes.
No, this is public vaping. Yeah, okay.
And the reason I'm asking that is just because there are different ways that people will ingest their various products, be them tobacco and/or marijuana. And so if someone's vaping and it's not a nuisance, we're going to say no vaping at all, but...
In public.
In public.
Just wherever smoking is prohibited, so would vaping be prohibited? So obviously in your own home, no.
No, no, I see, no, I'm totally with that, but I'm just wondering how difficult this will be to, I mean, if there's excessive vaping, it definitely becomes a nuisance, but if, I'm just trying to think, is this going to be enforceable? That's all.
Probably about as enforceable as our smoking regulations currently are.
I guess that's why I bring it up.
Okay. John?
Sure, thank you. Does our current smoking regulation, and I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to look at it, include any regulation of smoking in automobiles?
I believe there's an exemption unless minors are in the car.
So could you tell me what the exemption is in terms of minors? And would this apply? In other words, would this proposed ordinance not allow the smoking of marijuana products in an automobile where children are present or minors are present?
Right now, the current code provides that places where smoking may be permitted is inside a private automobile where no minor child is present. That's what the current code says.
Okay, great. Just wanted to reaffirm that. And it doesn't, there is no, one of the exemptions is your own personal residence.
Absolutely.
So, and was there any discussion about controlling in the presence of minors, smoke inside a personal residence at the subcommittee level? And potential secondhand smoke inhalation for minors?
We did not discuss that, and that would be, I think, uncharted waters to go into if we were going to run up against that the state says you can smoke marijuana. However, the city then says that there's restrictions on how you can smoke it at your private property. That doesn't mean we couldn't do that, but it would certainly be a new area of regulation that I'm not seeing a lot of cities doing, but that doesn't mean we can't explore it.
Well, my concern, obviously, is protecting young people from health hazards, and so I'll stop there and go. And I know it's probably not even enforceable, but nonetheless, important. So I'll just, I'm done.
Marla's?
Yeah, I don't have any questions, and of course, I support the recommendations as stated.
Okay, I do as well. I'm still, I guess, maybe at the end, we can go back to the enforcement and the fines thing as it applies to all these things across the board. I guess I just want to be clear on that, but I'm good. We can move on to the next one.
So we talked about personal cultivation, public use smoking, and then we have the last area, which is commercial cannabis businesses. And there are, excuse me, there are a number of different businesses here that the subcommittee has recommendations on whether to permit and allow or to prohibit. There was deviation from the previous council direction on a number of the businesses, so I wanted to address that. The prior direction from council was to take a look at allowing some limited dispensaries, allowing manufacturing, and allowing testing. Upon further review, the council subcommittee is recommending that testing and manufacturing not be permitted at present. A lot of the consideration given to that was in response to Chief Knuckles had a very well-written memorandum he presented on some of the health and safety concerns with manufacturing and testing. The chief could speak to this more, but in some, a lot of the equipment that is being used for testing and manufacturing right now is not as regulated or as time-tested as one would hope because it's a new industry, and there's a lot of potential for fire. That doesn't mean that any of these problems would occur, but the chief had some concerns. Chief, do you want to speak to your concerns on those?
Sure, thank you. The main concern is, this is not a new industry. This is the same type of industry they use for the perfume making, incense, and there's two types of processes. There's Schedule I and Schedule II. The Schedule I process is mostly the dry goods to make for the edible manufacturing of their product. That is not a very high desirable method to put in edibles. The volatile process that uses butane or ethanol or CO2, where they mix the gas with the product and they extract a honey oil process, that is a very volatile process. Again, that's not a new process, it's been around, but in our community, there would definitely be some zoning issues of where we're going to replace this volatile process at. And also, the industry is going to be changing so much the next two, three, four, five years that they're even talking, I just heard from Chief Lieberman from Fyss City's Fire Authority, that they're even considering putting the ethanol process to Schedule I process now. So there's going to be some changes with how the state fire marshal's going to be looking at it. If you do wish to have the manufacturing or testing process in our community, there is some recommendations. I did pass forward on some of the fire codes and building codes that we can to make the building safer and to make the process safer, and also using a industry hygienist as someone who is, just like how we use fire sprinkler engineers, hydraulic engineers, to help us with building design and sprinkler design, but using a hygienist in the application permit process to make sure that we're up and up with the current trends and the changes that are occurring in this. So, I mean, as fire chief, I do have some concerns. It is a volatile process. We've had in the past two explosions in our community, one, actually a roof came off a house, that caused by illegal honey oil manufacturing process. It is a very volatile process, and we just have to make sure that our buildings are well-protected, and there are also some good restrictions on the distance between homes that people are sleeping in and our schools.
I just wanted to add also that I think a primary consideration from the subcommittee was that we don't have in place any kind of taxation for manufacturing or testing, and that one of the reasons that some communities may be moving into that area is that they hope to collect some money and make some money on it. And so if we were to consider that in the future, I think the first step would be to pass tax so that we understand how much money we're going to be getting from this industry. So that was another consideration in saying, at least at this point, a more wait-and-see approach would make more sense, and especially to see what happens in other cities that may be moving more aggressively into it than we are or than we should.
And, excuse me, Council Honorable Mayor, so this is number six on the staff report. I kind of jumped ahead because it was the big one, but at least in terms of change of direction.
Okay. Red, I think you had some comments as well?
Yeah. Another reason to hold off until we have a tax vote is that I see that vote as also community approval of allowing manufacturing and testing and understanding the potential dangers of that.
Okay. Any other comments on the manufacturing and testing portion of this?
Question?
Question? John?
He left. What's the difference between Schedule I and Schedule II? He's on the phone.
I can answer that.
Can you answer that?
Yeah, Type 6 and Type 7 are actually the two different manufacturing licenses. Type 6 is the use of non-volatile chemicals, and then Type 7 will be the use of volatile chemicals. One of the biggest regulations for volatile use is requiring that what's called a closed-loop system be used, whereby any of the gases or any of the volatile chemicals stay within a closed loop during the manufacturing, because if they escape, they could either ignite or they could cause poisonous interaction with the public. There's other concerns, too, like the compressed gases that are used, making sure those are regulated properly. So the Schedule II or Type 7 are definitely the ones that pose a greater risk if something goes wrong.
And was he referring to the same concerns with regard to testing and the use of volatile products in testing? Or was that just limited to manufacturing? Steve, the question, yeah. I mean, for testing, the process for testing, does that involve volatile chemicals and hazard as fire issues that you've identified, or is it mainly manufacturing?
Most of the volatile processes during the stage are Type II type of manufacturing. Right now, how the testing is right now, it is not volatile, but we don't know where it's going to be six months from now. You know, basically, right now, a testing facility is just like any other type of medication or food testing facility in a community. But right now, we just don't know where it's going to be going with this process. It may become a volatile process. That's why my recommendation that I did give, that they do have the same restrictions on distance from residents and schools, and also fire protection systems and hood systems if needed, as per the California Fire Code and Building Code.
Thank you.
If I could add for testing, an independent issue for manufacturing is that the state is going to require that a sample from every crop or amount of cannabis product that they want, somebody wants to sell, a sample will be tested, and then that sample needs to be destroyed and dispensed with as waste. And so testing facilities are going to have an issue of basically dealing with cannabis waste that they're going to have to get rid of. waste that they're going to have to get rid of somehow. So also, as the chief was mentioning for testing, the state's going to require that both potency and then contaminants be tested. And potency is yet to be developed. Contaminants, that's easy enough, but it certainly could involve some chemical reactions.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, you want to jump back to where we shouldn't?
Sure, we could jump back to dispensaries, start with that. So the state will be licensing basically six different types of businesses and so we're going to talk about these here. And so the first business type is dispensaries and the council subcommittee is recommending that retail sales or dispensaries be allowed for medical and not for recreational or adult use and that there'll be two that the city would permit or license. One deviation from prior council suggestion was that applications not be accepted until the middle of 2018. We wait until July 1st. And again, this is to see how other communities are handling and dealing with opening up dispensaries at the beginning of the year. The locations, this would be subject to generation of a final radius map so we can actually see where the businesses could locate with these restrictions. We want to make sure we don't zone them entirely out of the city. But the idea is to allow them in C1, central business, C2, general commercial, and light industrial, M1. Prohibit them within 600 feet of a school, which is state law, and add to that park, place of worship, or residential zone. I would caution though that if we receive direction to make that the distance restrictions, then we would bring back a radius map and make sure that we're not completely zoning these out of anywhere in the city. And if that becomes a problem, then we could talk to the subcommittee about distance recommendations to bring back on the 24th. And then also have 100-foot restriction between the dispensaries. So that would be locations. And then permit issuance. There was quite a bit of discussion on how to go ahead and issue a permit. How does somebody actually get a city permit to run one of the two dispensaries? And to make sure that there's a lot of checks in the process, the idea was to have a three-step, three steps that one goes through. First, the community development director will receive applications and just vet them to see if they meet the minimum standards. So let's say 10 applications are turned in, three of them, for whatever reasons, just don't meet our standards, so their applications are rejected. Then you have those seven. You have seven left for the two spots. At that point, there'll be a committee and the proposed members of the committee would be police chief, fire chief, and the committee recommended city attorney or their designees. And this committee would then rank the applications based upon how well they promote the health, safety, and welfare of the community. I listed some of the possible criteria here. These would include how well-developed the operation plan is for the business, security plan, including details for non-diversion of cannabis for illegal uses, impacts on the environment, economic opportunities for City of Morro Bay residents, capitalization, et cetera, et cetera. And so once the applications are ranked, then finally, there'll be a recommendation from the committee on which of those should get the permits. And then that would go to the city manager and the city manager would decide who gets the permits. Now, it could be city council that makes the final decision. The subcommittee went back and forth on this for a while and so I think I could turn it over to the subcommittee members on the thinking behind final decision-making going to city manager.
Is there a strategy between either one of you? Who goes first? Does it matter?
No, we don't have a strategy.
No, but I always like to follow Marla because she speaks so beautifully.
Oh, Red. I'm flushing. I think, and I should mention that Grover Beach uses the city council making the decision. And we thought about that and we thought what kind of a position that would put us in as a city council and we did not want this to be a political process and we did not want to have a pressure applied to us as council members from members of the industry and felt that it really should be a technical decision and it was best handled by people on our city staff. So that was our reasoning for rejecting council and saying the city manager would make the final decision.
And that's also why we specify that there is no appeal from the city manager's decision.
Right.
Any other discussion? Matt? No? John?
With the whole section?
Yeah.
Yeah, in general. I'm curious as to the rationale, well, my first question I guess would be Chris is when legally could a medical dispensary be operational?
Under the-
Not in the city, I'm sorry, with our ordinance, but under the state law as it's coming down.
Right now, medical dispensaries can be legal, but if somebody wants to run one of the new for-profit ones, January 1st is when the state says they can at the earliest run. To operate a facility that would start on January 1st, as was mentioned in public comment, folks are able to get a temporary license or permit from the state and/or the city. But see, right now, there aren't any facilities operating in Morro Bay, so the temporary licenses are generally for places like, say, Oakland or San Jose, San Francisco, the City of Los Angeles that have existing operations. So technically, January 1st, but that wouldn't happen for Morro Bay, it looks like.
And so the rationale for that is to wait and see how other cities do it? That's why we want to wait until six months later?
Yes. The proposal is that applications wouldn't even be accepted for review until July 1st, 2018. So there's a cooling-off period. I believe the council member-
Yeah, well, I was just going to say that part of it also is that we need to set up that procedure and so, and it's going to take staff time. And so we were somewhat considerate of other demands on staff time in the next six months and felt that because this is a process that has to be established with the permitting process, et cetera, we did not want to burden staff and so that was part of it, part of the rationale as well.
And also, the staff time involved is going to have to be reimbursed by fees, so we're going to have to take time to establish a reasonable fee schedule.
Scott, can you generally just remind me or us where C1, C2, and M1 basically are in the city?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring my map with me.
Yeah, C1 is generally along our main commercial corridors running Morro Bay Boulevard, Main Street. C2 runs along areas like Quintana. And then M1, we have also on Quintana, we have some M1 over there, and then we have some on the area of North Main. Those are primarily where they're located.
Okay.
Base mark treatment plant, I think is also M1.
Great. The rationale for 600 feet from a school as opposed to 1,000 feet or 5,000 feet or?
600 feet from schools is the state minimum. The city can increase it, but if the city wants to do the minimum, then they have to be 600 feet from a school and that's it. Subcommittee is recommending further distance requirements from other sensitive uses like parks, residences, churches. You could make it more.
Yeah, right. And what's the ra- God, I keep turning myself off here. 100 feet between dispensaries. I'm just curious how you arrive at that. I mean, that's not very much, it's like-
The idea is that they're basically just not going to be next door to each other, but you know, that's entirely a policy decision whether you want them separated or not.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. A G P, can you turn the mic up a little bit for me? I'm trying to lean into my mic. I always feel like I'm not speaking well enough into this. Thank you, appreciate it. My question on the interview process, so to go through the process, we're only going to have two dispensaries and I'm looking at our subcommittee members, so it's not like we're going to be, the frequency of going through selecting two dispensaries will be very often. I would hope that maybe that would just happen once and we'd probably go through that, but should, so I guess I'm looking, Mari, I'm looking to you as far as, from a position of city manager making the final call on that versus, you know, having some council interaction or appeal to council. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I agree with Marla's position that I think to keep the city council at this point in bay and make it a non-political staff decision is probably more appropriate.
Totally agree as well. And as far as appeal or anything like that?
I would recommend no appeal unless the council feels the need to have an appeal.
Okay.
For what it's worth, on the issue of appeal, the thinking is, is that why wouldn't all the folks that don't get picked automatically appeal? So if we create a quote-unquote optional appeal process, you're probably going to get appeals.
Okay. Okay, and then the other question as far as schools or parks, so could that mean, I mean, a public school or just a private, private school daycare type thing? Would that qualify as well? Is that going to be in that realm?
We absolutely could include any type of school or daycare in our definition of school.
And so then the same would apply that if there was the ability for someone to want to open up a daycare and a cannabis dispensary was there, that would prohibit them from opening as well?
Probably. You know, we could certainly make that, we could certainly address that if the city would want to do it differently, but yeah, I mean, you would think that they couldn't if we have that restriction.
Okay. So I mean, it comes to mind on the particular districts that we're in and I guess I would, I'm looking towards Scott to think about those districts and what districts would lend itself for, you know, a daycare, you know, so if businesses were to be developed within those zoned areas, just kind of in anticipation for that. And you know, my sense is, I don't, I think we're here to give direction tonight to come back with a final draft ordinance and we might have, even at the first reading, we might be able to address, you know, refinements there and that, but I guess, Scott, I don't know if you can respond to that, please?
Well, I would say, you know, if we're going to add other types of uses there that we're going to create a buffer around, feel free to do that, but I definitely would want to start going and looking at what that looks like to make sure we're not zoning them out of the city as Mr. Newmeyer indicated. So as far as, you know, we have our C1 and C2, you know, properties in town, we have plenty of them, so I don't think there's an issue there. Daycare would be allowed in some of those areas and so, but I don't, I think we have plenty of property in town to allow that to work. It's just if you started, my concern really would be if you started increasing, adding things into the list of things we're going to put that buffer around, then we need to do a little bit of work on my end to make sure that we're not creating a situation where you can't put them anywhere.
Yep, and that's why I was just, wanted to get some sense of that conversation. Okay, I think I'm good at that. Any other?
Yeah, Jamie, you brought a really good point about a daycare center wanting to open a facility, but it, their chosen area is within 600 feet of an existing cannabis business, then there, as the proposed daycare center, we would have to be prepared to hear complaints that we want to do daycare, but you guys let the cannabis business in there and so that restricts our freedom. I'm not saying that we should change this, I'm just saying we need to be prepared for that eventuality.
And that's, thanks. And I think part of the preparation was just asking the question for Scott, so you know, based on that, if we look at the C1, C2, M1, you know, with that, would he be looking at that and saying, hmm, maybe I would refine this area because this might be more susceptible to those types of daycare use and maybe to kind of run, to get ahead of that, maybe we should change, you know, change how we allow it being used in a central district versus a general commercial. But from what he's, from what I got from Scott was, we'll be okay.
Yeah, and small daycare facilities are allowed in residential zones, so there's a lot of ability to put them there and you can even have larger ones with conditional use permits, so I don't know that, I mean, we're only going to have two, so I don't know that we're going to unnecessarily, you know, limit the ability to provide daycare or any other use for that matter.
Okay, all right.
By the way, I'm sorry, the school definition, the state does include daycare and youth centers as just part of the general state minimum restrictions, so it's a very broad definition. So schools, daycare, youth centers, the state says you cannot locate within 600 feet of them. The city also could in the restriction, if they wanted to, however, limit the 600 feet to someone who wants to open up a cannabis business, but if it's existing, that doesn't mean that if somebody wanted to open a daycare 100 feet away that they can't, after the cannabis business opens, at least apply for one. That'd be a policy decision. It doesn't have to work both ways.
Okay, that's, I guess that's why I asked the question. So it seems as though we should have some sort of conversation on that, so if we refine this, to come back to us for the first reading, we'll have that clear?
Absolutely.
Okay, so based on that, we need to determine whether or not, whether or not if there's a, we haven't discussed whether or not we want to change that parameter from 600 or 500 or 1,000. So I guess is there general consensus that the initial distance is okay at this point? And I'm looking for consensus and I would, I guess that's, that would be, I would agree with the initial assessment on the distance. Okay, so then, then would we want to consider if a youth center or school business wanted to go in after the fact, would we want to allow that within any distance or within a predetermined distance? Like, that's the question that we have to answer now. Otherwise, if it stays unanswered, then the 600-foot perimeter exists and if someone applies for an application within the 600-foot zone, they wouldn't be allowed to. Is that correct?
Well, it depends on how we'd write it. I mean, I think the way it would be written now is that the cannabis business can't open up within 600 feet of the school, daycare, or youth center. However, if three years later, a daycare center wants to locate next door, the restriction wouldn't apply to them by default.
Okay.
But what's the rationale for not, for having the distance limitation? Is it not the protection of the health and safety of the children?
Absolutely.
And so if you had a quote marginal operator of schools, of a daycare center, let's say, and you know, some of these are small kinds of entities that makes a decision to move within 300 feet of a facility, I don't think I'd support that. I wouldn't want to see that happen. So I think the strict, whatever the, 600 is 600. Yeah.
Sure.
That's my opinion.
Okay, anybody else on that? Everybody good? Okay, well, that was easy. Okay. Good to clarify, though.
Yep, thank you. So on dispensaries, then, we went over the permit issuance, locations, number, and applications. And then there were a few other issues and then we would seek direction on dispensaries in general. We were going to have a term of one to two years for the initial dispensary application or the initial dispensary permit. The idea was to have an annual review of each dispensary to make sure that they're following the law and that, you know, they're being good neighbors, but we didn't want to have both reviewed every year. We want to switch it back and forth so it doesn't drain too many resources from staff. So the idea is, is that generally it's a one-year term, but for the very first review, one of the two dispensaries would not be reviewed until two years have passed, if that all makes sense. And then thereafter, every year, there would be an annual review and if you don't pass your annual review, then your permit is not issued again and the city starts taking applications for someone else to get one of the two spots. And then recover all fees.
Excuse me, Chris, could I just get clarification on that? Because in the text- Excuse me, Chris, could I just get clarification on that, because in the text, it says thereafter a two-year term, not a one-year term, so my understanding was initially it would be one year, because we wanted to check, but once we'd made that initial check, it was every two years. Am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, actually, I misspoke on the system. It's, yeah, it would be every two years, so every year, one of the two is reviewed by staff.
Alright, thanks.
Just a quick question. What criteria would one use for denial of renewal? I mean, so if somebody from one of the businesses, I don't know, didn't provide enough economic benefit to the city of Morro Bay, I mean, how do we determine that they're?
The review process that's contemplated would be to have them do the exact same three steps that they did to get the permit, and so if they are selected because they best meet that merit list of economic opportunities, you know, good security plan, an operations plan, that's wonderful, and it turns out over the course of the next year or two, that they don't uphold those factors, those standards, then the city can say, we're not renewing your permit. We're going to go to the person that was in third or fourth place and give them a chance. So that's one option. Another option would just be a review to make sure they've been in compliance with the law, and if so, renew the permit. So that's a policy decision. The subcommittee came down on the thorough review process, but it's up to the full council what we do.
Any other discussion or questions?
Well, my sense is that you have a business that has invested a significant amount of money, time, and resources, and to have to submit them to an every-two-year rigorous process, again, to me, seems overly onerous. I don't know that we do that in any other areas, and even though I know that this is concerning with regard to the product that is for sale, I would think that based upon a less onerous review, the renewal could be granted as opposed to going through the whole thing again, but that's just my opinion, because of city resources being tied up, et cetera.
Yeah, and to be honest, John, I don't think we got into a lot of detail on what that review would look like in the subcommittee, so I recognize your concern also.
I'd opt for making it less onerous, if possible, and I'll leave it at that, and see if there's support for that.
Yeah.
Red?
I'm not sure, John, that I see anything wrong with simply reviewing the plans that were published with the initial application, just for compliance, which would not be such a thorough vetting as the original, simply to say that the plan still looks good, it's working, and we don't have complaints or infractions. That's the way I would look at it. But I think that this is different from other businesses, because, number one, we're dealing with cash, and number two, we're dealing with a substance that is easily accessible to children if not properly controlled, and that's something we really want to avoid.
I agree with that, and I just, the way it sounded is that every two years, the whole process would have to be repeated again, of reapplying and going through this rigorous determination for continued viability. And what you've stated, I support, which is different than going through the whole process and this rigorous reaffirmation of that process, so I think we're on the same page, yeah.
So Chris, as far as capturing this discussion in the review process, is that, can, are you going to, are you going to be able to come back with something based on that, those comments?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And then for revenue, we would seek development agreements.
Matt, did you have any questions on that? I'm sorry.
No questions, except I see both John and Red's point, however, have they already gone through the three-step process at the beginning, keeping that paperwork, it's going to be relatively simple to review that in that two-year timeframe, so I agree.
That's what I saw.
Okay.
I would note that the process for review likely could be very much as described by Commissioner Davis, with the language that's in here now. It, you know, it says you have a three-step process that you go through, and that would just be, starts in community development, goes to the committee, and then to the city manager with the information that we have, so I don't know that anything needs to be changed.
Okay.
Would be my point there.
Great, okay. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, so for revenue, right now, the best we could do is seek development agreements with the operators. That would be in the context of bringing back a more broad exploration of sending a tax to the voters in fall of 2018. Between now and then, we would seek development agreements to secure revenue. And then for regulations, I list here some of the regulations, it's not even all of them, but these are some of the main ones that we would impose upon the retail businesses. I'd like to note that on, the one on restrictions in sales, this is on 13, restrictions on sales and packaging of cannabis edibles to prevent consumption by minors. There will be state regulations, however, the city can impose more, and the ones that we'll, we would be proposing would be that there's no similarity to candy or something that a minor might eat accidentally, that it's definitely labeled as medical cannabis, et cetera. Essentially restricting the dispensaries from selling edibles that might be legal under state law, but we're not going to let them be sold in the city, so they're not attractive to minors. That seemed to be a big issue that was raised before. Otherwise, most of the restrictions are, you know, standard ones that most cities are requiring, video cameras, inspection authority for the city, insurance requirement, background checks, et cetera. And then finally, on the next page, penalties, and it seems that there is a question on just the penalties in general, that we're applying to both dispensaries and personal cannabis. To Mayor's pleasure, we could talk about that now, or we could discuss after we go through the rest of them.
Sure, and I just have one quick question. You mentioned video, is there any requirements on retention of videos?
Yes, it would be that they have to keep them for at least 60 days. We could, I mean, I'm sorry, at least 30 days, we could make it 60. Standard right now is that you have 24/7 video of all main areas of the dispensary, and it actually is live-streamed to the police and other city officials, so they can basically watch whatever's going on any time of the day.
Long as we're okay on what that requirement is and what their request is, okay, thanks.
Could I ask a question? This gets back at, actually, fees and revenue. I just wanted to be clear that we cannot, as a city, impose any additional tax on medical marijuana. Is that correct?
Actually, the city can put more tax on medical marijuana. The only restriction on medical cannabis taxes is that someone who purchases it, purchases medical cannabis, if they have a state-issued medical card, don't have to pay state sales tax, but that's it. Cities can tax medical cannabis any way they want, as long as the voters approve it, just like they can tax adult use or recreational.
Okay, and then to follow up on the revenue, it's my understanding that the development agreement is really not associated with the tax, that we, that is a separate issue that we could actually do immediately if we chose.
Yes, that is true.
Right, so it is not necessarily in the context of sending a tax measure?
That is, that is correct. Development agreements can be approved any day of the year by the city council.
Okay, thank you.
And just, just to keep us on time, we're at about 5:20. I know we'd kind of like to get done at 5:30, but we'll have some flexibility, but just to make sure we have some, some gap time in between the council, regular council meetings, I just want to do a little time check with everybody. Thanks. Go ahead, John.
Quick question on sales tax. If they do not have a valid card and come into a medical dispensary, how can they get it if they don't have a medical card?
The state just requires that you be a quote-unquote qualified patient, which means that a doctor has recommended, which isn't a prescription, just recommended that the use of medical cannabis will help whatever ailment you have. So it depends on whatever the dispensary's requirements are for sale. Some dispensaries require that you show a medical ID card, some just require you affirming you're a qualified patient, so it depends. Now, there's also different cards. There's the county-issued card, which is what most people have, and then there's going to be the new state card, which allows you to not pay sales tax.
So the issue really for me is that I walk in, I don't have a card, so to speak, either county or state-issued, and I indicate to the purveyor of the business that my physician said, boy, you have glaucoma, you need to get, you know, marijuana. My fear is that we're turning into a recreational type of business as opposed to one that is really, truly, you're strictly medical, and there should be some controls over that in order to do that. So we could mandate a prescription, could we not, or a prescription card requirement for those businesses?
Yes, and to be clear, it's a recommendation, not a prescription, because federal law prohibits MDs from prescribing illegal federal substances.
Right, right.
So it's just a recommendation, but yeah, we could do that. We could say that they have to have written recommendation at a minimum, or one of the county-issued medical cards.
I would support that, otherwise, I think it pretty much turns into a recreation entity. And from the board of equalization standpoint, without that card, the physician recommendation, even though it's in writing, it's not a prescription, is a taxable event, correct? From a sales tax standpoint?
You mean the sales tax collected by the dispensary? Unless there's a state-issued medical card, you will be, you will be charged sales tax.
Since it's a cash business, did the committee discuss controls over making sure that those taxes are collected reasonably, and that those revenues flow to the city for sales tax, which is my concern, if there's not a good process for that?
That's a really good question, and we have a cash control plan as one of the requirements for applicants to submit to the city.
Great.
John, when we were at the League of California Cities, some of the expo booths or services that offer this kind of support to cities for a fee, which I assume we would pass on to the, to the operators, they will make sure that the money is accounted for and that the cash is properly handled, because certainly one of our concerns is going to be that if we have a processing fee in the amount of several hundred or several thousand dollars, and the applicant brings Scott a suitcase full of cash, I don't think Scott wants to be in that position, so, but there are.
He might. And we don't want him to be in that position.
Have we asked Scott?
There are businesses available that will provide that kind of service for us.
Just wanted to make sure that it's considered from two standpoints, maximizing our revenue, and then secondarily, not turning it into a recreational entity with regard to the prescription issue.
So as far as your point on the prescription, the medical, your specific input on that, which I would support, I just want to make sure that we have made comments as a council on which, where we want to go with that, and if you've interpreted that correctly, Chris.
I would seek council direction on whether you have to have a county ID card, a medical ID card to purchase, or whether you can show that your doctor has written a recommendation, or whether you can just verbally say, my doctor recommended it. I mean, typically, it's, there's no consensus on, you know, what is required. Most dispensaries, just to make sure that they follow the law, require some kind of ID or something written from a doctor. It's rare, I believe, to just be able to walk in and say, yeah, my doctor said, sell it to me.
And I guess, just to piggyback on this, as I'm thinking through this, I understand what you're saying, John, but I'm also wondering, is it, would it be compared to going to a pharmacy and it's, you're looking for something over the counter, so there's no prescription, and is that the realm in which some of the medical marijuana treatments might be? So is there differentiate between kind of the over-the-counter versus, you know, a medical prescription? And some people might want to say, hmm, I might be able to do my own home remedy if there's something that's treating such and such ailment, no different than over-the-counter. I guess that would be my contrast to the comment.
Well, the definition is it's a, it's a medical dispensary, so there must be, in my mind, a bona fide medical condition, and the onus on us is to ensure that there is documentation of a bona fide medical condition in order for one to seek the product or to get the product, and, you know, I would just suggest that either the card and/or the, exactly what Chris said, the written recommendation of the clinician is, is all you need, and I think most of the businesses do that.
And also, for what it's worth, in regards to the city's oversight of this, there is now the application of HIPAA privacy rules to medical cannabis dispensaries, and so how well the city can make sure a business is following these rules is going to be harder than, well, would be if there weren't privacy rights involved.
Go ahead, Matt, yeah.
Yes, this question is for Red and Marlis. In terms of the subcommittee, this issue that is coming up, that John's bringing up, how did the subcommittee approach it?
You know, to be honest with you, it was my understanding that a medical, some kind of a doctor's recommendation was required, so I've always been operating on the assumption that that would be part of the process. Either that or the state-issued card. I was unaware about county-issued cards, so I always assumed that you had to have some kind of a doctor's recommendation, and I thought that was part of state law, so it would be my misunderstanding, if that's not correct.
That was my understanding also, but, so the question for me is, if the buyer has to produce written authorization, are we going to require the vendor to keep a record? As you say, now we're getting into the HIPAA realm, and so...
Where do we stand on that?
I believe we could require the business to keep, keep it on file, but whether we can access it and under what conditions is going to be limited. The new Prop 64 rules made it clear that HIPAA covers the medical, federal medical privacy rules, a medical cannabis recommendation.
If it's, if it's traditional HIPAA regulations, we would not be able to access it without either legal authority being given to us or authority by the individual patient themselves. And so I think it should be in there. How enforceable it is, eh, not so sure, but my point is, it may be a deterrent to turning it into a recreational facility is my concern.
Matt?
In terms of, Chris, in terms of county-wide and/or statewide, in terms of precedent, these different IDs that people could show in such a facility, is there any sort of precedent, or any sort of thing that you've been looking at and hearing coming down, how people do it?
Well, it is the law now that every county in the state has to make available the medical ID cards to someone who wants one, and so that is the most reliable and just, if you will, traditional way to regulate, is say, go get that county card, or you have to get the county card. You know, the, the minimum is just a verbal or written recommendation from a doctor, which obviously is open to, you know, open to a lot of interpretation what that means, I guess, but yeah, just requiring the county ID card.
Okay, I think, looking at this, I could see perhaps putting a list of A, B, or C, if not D, of different types of qualifying documents that could be used. I can see that being useful.
Okay, we're in consensus with that? Okay, all right, we're right at the 5:30 mark, just want to check in.
Okay, if we have the consensus on dispensaries now, there's just a few last issues to go over, which shouldn't be as long. I can just mention these and then see if there's any, anything to talk about, or whether the recommendation's accepted. So prohibit recreational dispensaries is the recommendation. Um, so prohibit recreational dispensaries is the recommendation, um, which was consistent with prior direction. Uh, prohibit, uh, medical and recreational commercial cultivation, which is consistent with prior direction. Um, we talked about manufacturing and testing briefly already, and the recommendation is not to allow them, at least for now, and to reconsider the issue down the road. Um, and then deliveries, uh, prior direction was to allow both medical and recreational deliveries into town. Uh, the subcommittee is now recommending that only medical deliveries be allowed. Um, and so that would be an issue for discussion. And then, uh, one last item which wasn't on here is that there is the sixth state license of wholesale distributor, which is basically the person or the business that drives or transports the cannabis from, uh, the cultivation site to the retail site, you know, to the testing site. Um, and so I'd recommend that we actually allow those licensees to operate in the city, um, as long as they transfer between lawful businesses. So those are the further recommendations and the big issue is deliveries.
Okay. Um, I could support the, the, um, subcommittee recommendations. And I looked to my left to see comments from Red and Matt.
Yeah. Um, I'd like to point out that the, uh, the prohibition of recreational delivery, like the, uh, uh, the manufacturing and testing would be subject to reconsideration after a tax vote in November of 2018.
Matt?
Um, that was right where I was going to ask. So wonderful, um, Red to point that out. Um, also in terms of deliveries, are we going to, is there a limit on the number of delivery businesses? Um, or is it wide open? I know we have a number of them offering in the city right now, but, um, do we want to cap it or is it just how much the market can bear?
We don't know how to cap it.
Exactly.
No.
Yeah. So, yeah. So we didn't, we didn't see any point in doing it.
Right. And as long as they're a legitimate business and they have a license, I, it didn't matter to us where the individual was actually purchasing it from because it's coming as a delivery into the city.
Okay. John?
So will all of the same, um, regulatory requirements of the brick and mortar to dispensaries for medical apply to the, um, uh, delivery?
Um, actually, it would be entirely different regulations insofar as, um, as long as the delivery, uh, service is lawfully following the rules of, say, Grover Beach or, uh, San Jose or wherever they're delivering from, then we say, yeah, you can deliver into the city. Um, the minimum requirements that we're suggesting is just they have to get a city business license, uh, proof of association with a lawful dispensary outside of the city, and then have some records that the delivery driver has to keep on them, like a copy of the order, uh, their, uh, driver's license, a copy of the license for the lawful business. So if law enforcement stops them, then they have some documentation they're supposed to have on them.
So was there any discussion, like if 200 delivery services want to come to Morro Bay, that, that might be a little onerous?
The thinking was that, uh, realistically right now, deliveries are already occurring. And so the question is, is that does, do the deliveries continue to remain in the shadows or do we, uh, just go ahead and try to get some of them to license themselves to the city? So at least we know who's operating. Um, we certainly could, uh, pass an ordinance to ban all deliveries. Um, how effective enforcement would be is questionable.
Could we, um, impose a significant fine on those that do not, uh, get permitted in the city?
We could. Um, we, we definitely could. Uh, I know a number of cities have run up against the issue of, um, uh, unless there's a complaint about, uh, a rogue delivery service or an unlawful delivery service, uh, local law enforcement would have to commit significant resources to, um, conducting undercover buys and then actually prosecuting because the district attorneys really aren't helping, uh, prosecute cannabis violations these days. Um, but we could certainly do all of that. Um, enforcement's another issue.
Okay. Any further discussion at this point? And support, uh, the last couple items discussed? You know, pretty much, pretty, pretty much caught up there. Any, uh, anything else to close on, Chris?
Um, with just that, um, uh, the subcommittee, as I'd mentioned, is also recommending that staff come back by, uh, summer of next year with, uh, an analysis on sending a tax, a cannabis tax to the voters in the fall of next year.
Okay.
Yeah. With very specifics about how that would work and who would get taxed and how we would collect it, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Right.
Okay. So with that, we can conclude this. Basically, all the input would be, will be, um, crafted into the first reading of the ordinance that'll be coming back to us. Is that correct?
Yes. And my understanding, um, is that the recommendations here, uh, it sounds like are accepted by the council with, uh, a couple of caveats, um, that were on the record. Um, but in general, these recommendations are what the council is asking to be brought back on the 24th?
That's what I, that's what we, that's what we discussed. I think there's consensus for that.
Okay.
And I, I, I'm not taking it that we need a motion for all that, but this is just received direction. And I think along the way, we pretty much had consensus on the action items based on discussion along the way. So I just want to confirm we're, we're good with that.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
And with council as well. I mean, is, is everybody, okay. Matt, Matt has another question.
I'm so sorry. Um, I'm trying to think, and I know that at our last meeting some time ago, we talked about brick and mortar delivery, um, services, people that were not selling it out their door, but were running their, um, this, um, delivery system from there. Will that count for the two cannabis stores that we would have? Would that count against that?
If somebody wanted to open up a delivery-only brick and mortar store, then, uh, they could apply for one of the two city permits. Um, I think that the city process to review and see who gets the permits would take into account that it's going to be a pretty limited operation.
Okay. That's all. Okay. Any closing comments? Seeing none, um, thanks very much, Chris and staff for all the work. And, uh, we'll conclude, let me just go back to the front here. We can go ahead and conclude this and we'll adjourn and come back to our regular city council meeting at 6 o'clock. Thanks very much.